Would everybody please have a seat? We're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa? Mr. Bono?
Present.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Present.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Sabrano?
Present.
Mr. Silva? Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Present. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time, place, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office of Public Bulletin Board. Would everybody please rise? And would our students come up? Come up on stage.
They come up on stage, Joe.
Cheers.
There it comes. She got it. She got it.
Mr. Fiocchi and Mr. Sabrano? Mr. Mesterall, do we have a resolution for executive session?
We do. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Vineland School District will convene an executive session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. Discussion is about any matter involving a pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation, employment matters, and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as lawyer. Motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrano?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Yano, do we have special presentations this evening?
Yes, we have two special presentations. First, I'd like to ask Dr. Speakman, VASA president, who will recognize the 2023-2024 VASA Administrator of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. Yano. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kristin Speakman, President of the Vineland Administrators and Supervisors Association. We thank you for this opportunity tonight. Today is actually National Principals' Day, if you did not know. And on behalf of VASA, we... I have to say, it was like a national holiday at Winslow today. So it was a great day at Winslow today. We were showered with gifts. So on Principals' Day, we are very proud, on behalf of VASA, to recognize Principal Melissa Hannigan Painter as our 2024 VASA Administrator of the Year. Oh, that's our pal. So Melissa was selected by her peers in recognition of her longstanding... We're going to say longstanding service. Longstanding service and commitment, not old, to our youngest learners in Vineland. With years of experience under her belt, Melissa has honed her skills as an educator, leader, and advocate for children. Her commitment to early childhood education is unparalleled, and she continuously seeks out innovative approaches to support the academic and social-emotional development of our preschool, our youngest learners in Vineland. Melissa, tonight we celebrate you and your dedication to early childhood education, innovative leadership, and active involvement in our local community, which make you more than deserving of the title of Vineland School District Administrator of the Year. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Painter. You brought the team out tonight, so well done. Thank you, Dr. Speakman. So our second presentation of the evening is in celebration of the Governor's Educator of the Year program. So I will be announcing some names. We can cheer and be happy. We'd like our folks to come down to see our President Cottis Patti, Vice President Holmes for a certificate and a gift. I will begin with Noel Patel, Teacher of the Year from Vineland High School. Ms. Patel cannot join us this evening, so we're going to keep going down the list. We have Mr. Scanlon. He is also from Vineland High School as our 504 Case Manager of the Year. Next, from Johnstone, Brooke Smith, Teacher of the Year. Eighteen years of service. The next one's right here. Brooke Smith, thank you. Hold on, you've got one more coming. Excellent. Next, from Wallace School, Sharon Javon, Teacher of the Year. Fourteen years of experience. Next, we have April Ward, ESP of the Year. Twenty-eight years of service. Congratulations. Now, we move on to Memorial Middle School. Robert Creshy, Teacher of the Year. Twenty-two years of service. Excellent. Next, from Memorial, Kelly Lane, ESP of the Year. Congratulations. Moving on to Sergeant Dominic Pillar Middle School. Cheryl Caparale, Teacher of the Year. Seventeen years of service. And next, for Pillar School, we have Christina Sacomano, ESP of the Year. Speech Specialist. Sixteen years of service. Next, we move on to Delago East and West. For Teacher of the Year, Jennifer Ritholi. Twenty-two years of experience. Congratulations. Next, Zara Aiden, ESP of the Year. Six years with the district. Zara Aiden. She's not here with us this evening, so we're going to move on to Barcy Elementary School. Teacher of the Year, Nicole Robbins. Health and Phys Ed, eleven years. Next, for Barcy, Dana Leon, ESP of the Year. Twenty years of service. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to DePaulito Elementary School. For Teacher of the Year, Ashley Flanagan. Fourth-grade teacher. Fourteen years of service. Excellent. Next, for DePaulito School, ESP of the Year, Patricia Moore. Twenty-one years of service. Next up, Durand Elementary School. Teacher of the Year, Carolina Mills. ESL teacher, eighteen years of service. ESP of the Year for Durand Elementary School, Lindsay Collins. Speech therapist. Menys Elementary School. Teacher of the Year, Gina Castellini. Second-grade teacher, twenty years of service. Next, for Menys, ESP of the Year, Pamela Jerry. Power professional, twenty years of service. Congratulations. Next up, we have Petway Elementary. For Teacher of the Year, Rhonda Nanamaker. Next up for Petway, ESP of the Year, Jody Fiori. Seventeen years of service. Congratulations. Next, Sabater Elementary School, Janet Lynn Polo. Teacher of the Year. Second-grade teacher, eleven years teaching. Excellent. Next, ESP of the Year for Sabater Elementary, Kenneth Smith. Social worker, twenty-two years of service. I want to make sure I'm saying this last name correctly. For Winslow Elementary School, Teacher of the Year, Stacy Camerari. Fourteen years of experience in our school district. Congratulations, Stacy. Just wanted to make sure I'm saying the last... Drowley. Okay, good. Thank you. ESP of the Year, Jordan Dryly. Speech-language specialist, sixteen years. Congratulations. Next, we have Rossi Elementary School. Teacher of the Year, Christina Stanker. Special Education teacher. Twenty-five years of service. Congratulations. ESP of the Year for Rossi Elementary School, Susan Saliom. Guidance, twenty years of service. Excellent. Let's hear for all of our awardees tonight. Big round of applause. An amazing group of people. Let's hear standing ovation. All right. Next. We need some of our presentees to come up on stage for a picture. So the first half of the line. We want to take a nice group picture, so if we can get some of our folks on the stage, so we can make two lines. The rest of our board members, if you could join us on the stage behind our presenter. So yeah, come on up. Use this side. It's a little bit safer on this side. Yes, come on up, please. Yes. Yes, please. Come on up. We need a few... Yes. So let's get the last few of our board members up here in the line. All right, Gia, let me know when you're ready.
Seeing none? Do I have any questions or comments for the approval of the minutes? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore. Mr. Medio.
Yes, on the other two.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Katusbadi? Motion carries.
Do I have any committee reports? Mr. Fiore?
Yes, good evening. The Finance Committee met Tuesday, April 30th at 8:00 a.m. via Google Meet. In attendance was Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Yano, Ms. Carey, Ms. Katusbadi, Mr. Silva, Mr. Rivera, and myself. Following topics were discussed. Grants and AIDS, 24-25 NJ Child Assault Prevention, 2024 NJ SIG Safety Grant, NJYC Cap for prior students, help with getting jobs. Advanced Placement International Baccalaureate Course Expansion. Following bids, contracts are being renewed, substitute staffing, athletic field maintenance, flooring, digital assessment and data analysts, alternate counsel, primary physician, alternate school physician, architect of record, asphalt paving services. VH, Final High School North, partial roof replacement was awarded to Union Roofing as well as Memorial School. Personnel items, administrative contracts, nursing extra pay adjustments, VEA settlement agreement, Lawson Network Administrator, looking for options. And lastly, working on class actions, social media lawsuit fact sheet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on Monday, the 29th. Present were Mr. Yano, Mr. Marchi, Dr. Sneven, myself, Mr. Silva, and Mr. Sabrina.
We discussed the food science class, visited the Wallace Kitchen on April 23rd. We also discussed the summer reading is now available on the Vineland website under the Students tab. Summer reading is a requirement for all students entering 6th through 12th grade. Discussed summer curriculum writing, NJPA preliminary results for spring 2024. Once official results have been released, a formal board presentation will take place. Transportation Committee met on the Tuesday, the 30th, present were Mr. Mustarel, Ms. Rivera, Mr. Bono, Ms. O'Brien, and myself. Driver recap, 150 drivers budgeted, 140 route packages, which means drivers needed, 134 field positions, 13 subs, and five drivers in training. The driver attendance, the average absences in the morning is 16.33, average absences in the afternoon is 18.53. Registrations, there are 39 open registrations, 86 completed in April. One Camden County Educational Services Commission jointure, there were three accidents in April, no injuries. Personnel, we are not going to fill the senior mechanical position due to lack of interest. We have two new coordinators, assistant coordinators that are currently training with Dana and Betty. Transfiner will probably be providing training in May to the entire management team. We discussed tier times for 2024-25. We had a bus driver appreciation day where management gave the drivers pretzels, water, and a key change to recognize them for the day. Management paid for those treats. Thrill Share is replacing Blackboard, and that is set to go live in transportation in May, training to be provided in-house. Consolidation of routes, the consolidation did help our issue by freeing up six drivers and covering up an open route. Unfortunately, this is masked by the number of sports and field trips through utilizing our resources. We also, lastly, discuss the spring bus evacuation drills that are completed. Thank you.
Do we have any further reports? Do I have a report by our board solicitor?
None for public session.
Do we have our student representative from the high school? Public comment on agenda items or any other matter? Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Mustarel, do we have any yellow sheets?
Gladys Borges. I apologize if I mispronounced. The microphone. It's okay, no problem.
Okay. Good evening, elected Board of Education members. My name is Gladys Borges. I come before you tonight concerning our Vineland High School girls softball coaches, Mike Reed and Alex Gomez. I am asking that they be removed from their positions, these coaches who are bullying, harassing, coercing, and retaliating against our young and very impressionable student athletes. My 17-year-old granddaughter is on the varsity softball team. She's a junior this year and has been playing softball since the tender age of four years old and travel ball since eight. She puts her whole heart and soul into the sport, and when she plays, she leaves everything on the field. My concern is the unfair practices in retaliation aimed not only at my granddaughter but her teammates as well. My granddaughter attends CC Tech and is enrolled in one of the hardest programs CC Tech offers, the medical program. The problem lies here. My granddaughter missed winter workouts because she also plays tennis and basketball, and basketball was what she was playing when she missed her winter workouts. She also didn't go on a Florida spring training trip because she felt that she could not afford to miss three days of school at such a crucial time with exams around the corner and her practice and game schedule. She was uncomfortable in taking that much time off from school, knowing that her academics would suffer. The girls were never told about this trip until after they tried out, and the trip was not mandatory. Mind you, she plays three different sports for Vineland High School, all varsity teams, and as soon as one ends, the next one begins. There are no breaks in between, which leads us to the reason she missed winter workouts. She was still playing basketball. When the coaches learned of her decision to not go to the spring training, there were other varsity girls who also elected not to go. They tried bullying her. Coach Reed got in her face in front of her teammates and yelled at her, saying, "Are you a part of this team or not?", a then 16-year-old girl, not 17 yet. That is unacceptable, unacceptable. To which she said, "If you're a part of this team, you'll go to spring training with us." At this point, my granddaughter stood there upset that the coach would humiliate her in front of her peers. Not acceptable conduct from a coach. So now comes the retaliation. Instead of being their number-one pitcher, which she is, she's played there three years, she's waited her turn, she sat during her freshman year, she sat during her sophomore year, she should not be sitting during her junior year. They are, instead of playing their number-one pitcher, they are retaliating against her and other junior varsity players, and they are replacing them with sophomore and freshman girls who not only should be sitting, but play on their travel teams, or they are trying to recruit for their travel teams. Not acceptable in any means.
Ma'am, I need you to finish up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna finish this because I'll send you an email later. So I'd also like to bring to the attention, because I'm sure most of you don't know, that Coach Reed set up a Super Bowl football pool to raise funds for this spring training. I'm quite sure that he did not get permission from the athletic director or the board to do so because sports betting is illegal in the state of New Jersey. It is only allowed at casinos and race tracks. The fact that he set up this football pool illegally could cost the school board a fine of $7,500 because it was illegal. For this fact alone, he should be dismissed as a coach. He is retaliating against these young girls, and it is not fair to them. They have put in their time. I am asking you, the board, to remove him from his duties because when do we put athletics above academics? When? That's my question to you. Thank you.
Lena Atkinson?
Scott?
Could you repeat her name, please? Gladys Borges. Borges? Borges. Thank you. I apologize, Ms. Atkinson. Go ahead.
First, my name is, good evening. My name is Lena Atkinson, and I am a long-term sub-teacher at Vineland High School South. I'm also known as the teacher who suffered a concussion due to a fight on April 16th. I am requesting a few minutes longer than the three minutes allotted as my current disability due to the accident that occurred at the school caused a brain injury, and it takes more time than normal for daily tasks. Please be patient with me, as I have been very patient with you all, the board, and your choices. On April 16th, a fight broke out which ended up with me opening a door for security to bring a combative student into the faculty room. As I opened the door, the force from the other side and the door opening towards me, I took a blow to the chest, causing me to lose my breath. As I stepped out in the hall, I felt myself get weak, and I tried to sit down, but I wasn't fast enough, and I passed out and hit my head on the floor. Although I was assisted by a security guard to the ground, I still hit the floor, causing a concussion. Thank you to the staff that were there, that applied medical attention I needed quickly. The staff isn't the problem at the school, even most of the students aren't the issue. We have a problem with accountability. Students know how to work the system, and I know you guys can see this. You are on the front lines and don't have to deal with this on a daily basis. You just hear about it from staff like me after the fact. What's sad is, I was not the only one hurt that day. From what I was told, there was four of us. Four, four more that should be walking away from Vineland because once again, we weren't protected. Matter of fact, we were being blamed. What should we have done? Seriously? What should we have done to these repeated offenders before April 16th is the real issue? Instead of blaming staff, we should be ensuring the point system that was created is being effective. Accountability, where is yours? Also, as a teacher, when I finally do get to return, who are we really protecting? The vape sensors have been removed, so do I teach them high? I mean, you want us to get through the curriculum, play detective, look at their eyes, sniff the classroom, which I was told before, to determine which out of the 26, which my classroom only holds 24, students monitor bathroom times and reteach sections because the students just don't get it? But seriously, who are we protecting? The teachers? No, because we're the first one to blame if the student isn't passing. Security? No, they're the front line handling situation that deserves way more than minimum wage. Students? No, because they can't be wrong. We allow them so many warnings and not to be disciplined. So I ask again, who are we protecting? You aren't protecting anything but your pockets. The vape sensors were removed because of costs, yet we currently are not paying for a supervisor of security. We need to create a panel of administration, security, teachers, and students to discuss security and discipline. Board, I am requesting your time and attention to this matter. Just from my incident alone, other staff are submitting paperwork to retire or polishing up their resumes. How many more amazing teachers, administrators have to leave before you see that Vineland has a safety issue? Oh, and one more thing, can you please stop using the term "short-staffed"? That's when you hire adequate staff and they all call out on a day. We just don't have enough security as it is. Thank you for your time.
Did anybody else want to come up and speak? Seeing none, we'll close this portion. Thank you.
Superintendent, recommendations?
Yes. Requested discussion and approval regarding personnel items 1.1 through 1.4.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Medio? Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrina?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Want to congratulate some of our new principals who were hired this evening. So to begin at the high school level, I'd like to ask Mr. Pierce, excuse me, the new principal of Johnstone Middle School, please come on up. Mr. Pierce?
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank God, thank my wife and my children, and both my grandmothers for always believing in me. They have truly inspired me to be the person I am today. This has been such an exciting time for all of us. Going through the countless interviews, being told no so many times during my journey, but still persevering and persisting through all of the challenges and the adversity until I heard a yes, it has helped me further develop my leadership qualities. Climbing the ladder is difficult, but now I have become part of the proof that it can be done. I appreciate the superintendent, Mr. Yano, and the rest of the central administration as well. Also, the Vineland Board of Education for giving me this opportunity to thrive as a leader of a building. My priority, as always, is to make sure our students and staff are safe, cared for, and either learning or teaching. Thank you again, and have a blessed night.
Well said, Mr. Pierce. Thank you. Ms. Tomlin, Barcy Elementary School Principal, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Yano, Central Administration, and members of the board. I am so grateful to be named as principal of Dan Barcy School. It is truly an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to serve in this capacity. Being able to achieve this goal is extremely fulfilling to me both personally and professionally. I have been fortunate to not only work in Vineland for my entire career, even as far back as being a gear-up tutor and student teacher, but I have been lucky enough to serve all of that time at Durand Elementary School. I would be remiss if I did not mention how valuable and cherished my time has been there, working with the amazing staff, students, families, and of course, my partner, Mr. Greco. Leaving Durand is certainly bittersweet, but I see a future full of possibility and excitement as I look ahead to my new role at Barcy. Of course, this can't be done without family, and I have to thank mine for always being my biggest supporters and jumping in no matter what the journey is. To my daughter Brinkley, who I'm so blessed to have here tonight, I hope that you always shoot for the stars because you make mommy so proud and motivate me in everything that I do. Congratulations to all those who were honored this evening. Vineland is truly so fortunate to have so many amazing, amazing educators, service providers, and administrators. Lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Camardo for his support and encouragement. I look forward to working with him for the next few months, and of course, wish him the happiest in retirement. Barcy will always have their doors open for a visit from him. Again, I thank you all so very much and look forward to beginning what I'm sure is going to be a grand new adventure. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Tomlin. Next, I would like to invite Mr. Lapsley, who is our newest assistant principal at Vineland High School.
Thank you. Let me put these on. First, I want to thank Central Administration. Thank you for not getting tired of seeing my face. I want to be here, and that's why I kept showing up. Thank you to Mr. Yano and the board for considering me a good fit for Vineland. I want to express my appreciation to Administration, past and current. Your guidance and support have been invaluable on this journey. The time you dedicated to advising and mentoring me is truly appreciated. To my colleagues, past and present, your nagging, your encouragement to persist through this process, through this challenging journey, has taught me resilience. To my family, my boys, Andrew, Parker, Connor, as an educator and a parent, it's always, I've always aimed to impart a lesson. The lesson is simple. Hard work, perseverance, persistence, never go unnoticed forever. Keep showing up, continue putting in the effort, and never let anyone outwork you. To my wife, Jennifer, you have been my greatest supporter, and for that, I am profoundly grateful. Many of us may not realize this toll this process takes on your loved ones, but they hear all the no's. In fact, it impacts them more than it does, than it did me. Your unwavering support and encouragement have guided me to this moment, and for that, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I love you. And to the students, finally, to the students and families of Vineland, you can expect nothing but the best from this Vineland guy. Thank you.
At this time, I also would like to recognize the newly minted Dr. Frye. He's recently defended his dissertation. so congratulations, Dr. Frye. And also on our agenda, the retirement of Dr. Frye and Dr. Rossi. Both have placed their notice on our board agenda this evening. Lots of history, lots of experience in Vineland Public Schools, a lot of commitment to the system, so I want to thank you for your service. I would also like to recognize Dr. Sneeden for the work that she's done over the last few years, working with our team, helping us propel our district forward. Thank you for your service, and we appreciate the time that you've spent contributing to our team. Next, we'll move into discussion and approval regarding Procedures and Operations Items, 2.1 through 2.3.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Requesting discussion and approval of Finance Items, 4.1 through 4.31. There's quite a few on the list.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes, I will need to abstain on 4.25 and 4.27 only C.
Thank you. Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no regular agenda items. There are no proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. Do I have a motion? Or do we have any questions or comments on the approval bills? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes. Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no emergent items, no old business, no new business. Board member comments. I'll start with Mr. Fioki.
No comment at this time.
Mr. Medio?
Yes, I do have some comments. Let me get my notes out. I guess I'd like to start off by thanking Dr. Nate Frye and Dr. Joe Rossi for their service. I promised Nate I wouldn't cry, so I won't. I guess. I want, I want to congratulate the girls softball team on being number four in South Jersey. And I'd like to thank Dennis Rivera, Kim Cottis Potty, and Rob Bono for their hard work on the discipline committee. And I'd also like to thank all the principals who came to the meeting and gave us their input. I was very happy that my fellow board members decided to include the VEA so that we had boots-on-the-ground input. And to say we got an earful from Mr. Russo and Mrs. Keles would be an understatement. I think we were there an hour and a half, and they spoke for an hour and 15 minutes. And everything that they said is going to be taken under consideration, and I'm sure that everything that the principals said also will find its way into our discipline code for September. And last but not least, I'd like to commend the Pillow School Committee that we have. We're, the board has approved a, it's hard to say a mural because it's not a painting with the technology we have today, but I'd like to thank Dr. Yano. I'd like to thank Paul Faranacho for the work they've done on that. And I'd like to thank George Perez, who is going to, I don't even know what to say. He's gonna, what do you say? Generate it on the computer?
Create.
Create it on the computer? It's just amazing. I always thought he was just going to use a brush. But we're, we're well on our way. Mr. Perez and Jennifer Pillow have taken over getting ready for us to have some mockups to see what's there, and we're hoping that we'll get something in place at the beginning of the school year. If not, whenever it gets done, it gets done. Time is an important matter. It's making something that really strikes you. And we're, hopefully, that'll happen. Thank you.
Mr. Bono?
Thank you, Kim. I'd like to congratulate all the teachers of the years, of the year. What an example you're giving to the rest of our school district on your hard work and efforts that you put in, day in and day out. It's truly appreciated. So thank you. I'd like to congratulate the new principals. Best of luck in upholding VHS pride throughout our school and our district. I'd like to thank everyone that came out and voiced their concerns this evening. Takes a lot of courage to come out, speak in front of the board. But it means a lot because if we don't know there's a problem, we can't fix it. We can't move forward and, you know, better any issues that are out there. So thank you for coming forward and let us, let us know your issues. But you are heard. Just a little take off of what Mr. Medio just said. The, the discipline committee has been working very hard. Thank you to all the administrators from the elementary level, middle school level, high school, VEA, for coming out and voicing your concerns. You, all the issues were heard, and we listened. And hopefully, there's better days ahead. Last but not least, thank you to the students that came out today and did the flag salute for us to open up tonight's meeting. Thanks again.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to thank the students of Petway for leading us in the flag salute. Congratulations to the principal, excuse me, the prin, yeah, the principal of the year, the teachers of the year, and the service professionals of the year. I always say we have the best school district in New Jersey and try to change my mind, because you won't. We have the best of the best here in our own town, and we should be very proud of that. And we are proud of each and every one of you, along with every single teacher, every single service professional, and every single principal that we have in our school district. Thank you to Dr. Rossi and Dr. Frye for your service, your years of service to our, to our school district. You will be missed. I got to know you a little bit over the last three years. Dr. Frye was a teacher when I was a student at the Violin High School, so, yeah, we're not going to go there. But it's, I've, I've known Mr. Frye for a long time, so congratulations on your retirement and hope you catch a lot of fish. Congratulations to our new principals. Mr. Pierce, congratulations. It's always, it's always good to have a man of color to represent us, represent those that are not necessarily represented among society on a wide scale. And I know, besides anything else, you will do a great job. I got to know you a little bit. I hope to get to know you a little bit more, and I'm obviously going to be working together. So congratulations, congratulations to your family. Mrs. Tomlin, or Ms. Tom, you're not allowed to leave Durand. On a personal, Ms. Tomlin, she's a great vice principal at Durand. I've gotten to know her a little bit because my sons go to Durand. I know the work she puts in at Durand. She is going to be a blessing to Barcy, and she's going to be a huge loss to Durand. But, Mr. Greco, you got it. You got this. Congratulations. You, well deserved, well deserved. To the individuals that spoke, we listened. And in particular, the issue on discipline, we, we saw it, and we saw that it is an issue that we decided to convene a committee just to address the discipline issues that we have in our school district. As Mr. Medio and Mr. Bono spoke, we, we met with principals. We met with vice principals. We met with, with teachers. We met with, with everyone that had a stake in the schools. And we can confidently say that there's going to be some changes coming. And I'm hoping that we can solve the issues. It's going to take time, but we're going, we're, we're working at it. And we are committed to seeing those changes come to fruition. So we, we know, we hear you. We hear the concerns. We know it is a concern for many. And just know that it's not, your concerns are not falling on deaf ears. So we are ready to work on that, and I'm, and we are committed on doing so. I just, this time of year is always an exciting time of year because so many things are going on. It's the end of the year, the excitement of graduation, the excitement of moving up ceremonies. It's always great to attend. It's always good to, to see the kids and their faces smiling because they're excited. And it's always a pleasure, it's a pleasure. One of the great pleasures to be, to serve on this board is to be able to attend those, those events and see the kids' smiles and the parents' smiles. So I look forward to this year again attending many of those celebrations. And hopefully, this year will end up on a, well, I'm going to say hopefully. We are going to end on a high note this year, and we're going to go into next year on a high, and even higher note. We're going to just do amazing things in the future. I am very confident of that. So I thank you. God bless you, and have a great night. Buenas noches.
Mr. Sabrana?
Thank you. Thanks to our flag saluters tonight, also to our VAC Administrator of the Year, Mrs. Painter. I had the pleasure of working with her. Also to our district governors educators of the year and staff professionals of the year. I also had the pleasure of working with a few of them, and I know how hard they work on behalf of our students, their families, and our other staff members. Best of luck to our new principals. I had the pleasure of observing the interview with Ms. Tomlin and Mr. Pierce. I was very impressed by the passion that both of you have. You're going to need it, and a lot of energy, and probably a lot of coffee, too, if you're a coffee drinker, I don't know. Mr. Lapsley, I have not had the pleasure of meeting you, but I like the fact that you talked about just keep showing up because perseverance is one of the most important things in my world, and I think that that speaks well of you. Congratulations to all of our retirees, and especially Dr. Frye and Dr. Rossi. You two dudes, probably the last two at Central Administration that I will have known as both an employee and as a board member. I think I'm going to like that better. So there won't be any old wounds that I have to heal one way or the other. To our students now, I want to say, and their families, especially the class of 2024 at Violin High School. As Mr. Rivera said, we're entering that very busy last six or seven weeks of the school year, and we want everyone to have a wonderful time and enjoy all the activities that are scheduled. But most importantly, return home safely. Too many times in the years I've been here, we've had tragedies that have interfered with the celebrations that we plan to honor the academic, athletic, and extracurricular of activities that always throws a pall over, over these events and makes them even a little bit sad and not just the joy that they ought to be. I'm hoping that this year is a year that is a safe and a pleasant one for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, I'd like to thank our flag saluters from Petway and Johnstone Middle School. Congratulations to Ms. Painter, the VAC Administrator of the Year, the recipient. Very well deserved. Congratulations to our governors educators and our educational service professionals. You guys each play a very important role in our school, and we duly appreciate you guys. I'd like to congratulate the newly hired principals. Mr. Pierce, sad to see you leave Bridston, but I am glad you're thriving here as a Violin resident, too. So I wish you nothing but the best. I know you will do an amazing job at that school. Ms. Tomlin, never really had the opportunity of meeting you, but I know and I hear nothing but the best from you, so I wish you really well in your future endeavors. And Mr. Lapsley, I think I had a short stint with you at Violin High School. I taught at the 910 Building, so this is very well deserved, and I am looking forward to seeing the great work you're going to be putting in in that school. Congratulations to Dr. Frye, Dr. Rossi. Wish you guys nothing but the best on your retirement. Find some time for yourself and enjoy life. And congratulations in all your future endeavors. And lastly, the boys' track team, Four by Four, which was one of my favorite events to watch. They placed third place in the Penn Relays this past weekend. So congratulations to Joshua Barrero, Josh Seifus, Rashawn Jeffrey, and Caesar Perez. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, congratulations to all of our educators recognized this evening. Congratulations to Dr. Rossi and Dr. Frye on your well-deserved retirement, as well as the other retirees with a combined 172 years amongst seven people. Congratulations to Mr. Pierce, Ms. Tomlin, and Mr. Lapsley. These two are hard workers, and their work ethic is unmatched. Just want to say congratulations to all of you and looking forward to what you do with the task ahead. Just don't forget those people around you, the kids, your spouses, because that's what's most important at the end of the day, no matter how high you make it in this district. Congratulations to all, and have a great night.
Superintendent?
Just a few announcements. On behalf of the district and our Board of Ed, I'd like to acknowledge May is a month filled with National Recognition Days dedicated to celebrating the invaluable contributions of educational staff, from teachers and administrators to counselors and support staff. Their tireless efforts and dedication shapes the minds and the futures of our students. Their commitment is, their commitment to excellence deserves our utmost gratitude and recognition. Thank you for your service. We celebrated Bubble Day district-wide last month with many schools participating in their annual Blow Bubbles for Autism Awareness. Great events held at many schools. On April 22nd, we met with our student representatives from Violin High School to get their input on our strategic plan. And it was an exciting day. Our students were very insightful and provided many helpful suggestions. It was a great, great day, and I believe one of our presenters was here, Ms. Patel. She helped us with the project and also is one of our recipients of Teacher of the Year from the high school. Yesterday, we hosted the first secondary art show at Landis. Great opportunity to showcase our artwork. It's in the hallways now. If you'd like to take a look on your way out, please take a peek at it. It's all of our secondary students, middle school to high school. Our Performing Arts Department will be putting on several shows this month. VHS Spring Concert tomorrow at 6:30. Dance Recital, May 9th at 6:30 PM at the high school. school. Check out our district calendar to find out more activities. We have an action-packed May and June, as has been noted multiple times. Little Folks Festival, May 17th, 5:00 PM here at Catan Stadium. Come out and learn about our amazing preschool programs and have a fun night. There's so many school-based events coming up, including our high school, so be sure to keep an eye on our website, see what's going on, our school calendars for those dates. We encourage you to come out and support our students and staff however you can. Thank you.
I'd like to echo a lot of the comments of my fellow board members. I want to thank our students from Petway and Johnstone for coming out and helping us with our flag salute. To those who, of you who have come out and spoke tonight, as I've said before, and as our fellow, my fellow board members have, have said, if we don't know what's going on, we can't help you, so please continue to come out. It's actually very nice to see this many people sitting out here at this time. We're almost over, so thank you for coming out because it does mean something to us, too. I mean, I know you guys don't want to come out and sit for board meetings, but we appreciate you taking the time to be here. Congratulations to Ms. Painter, Vassit, from the Vassit Award Administrator of the Year. I've gotten to know her and worked with her as the preschool liaison, and she's a great, great person and a great administrator. To all of our 2023-24 District Governors, Educators of the Year, and District Service Professionals, congratulations, it's well deserved. I know we point out just this group, but you all are award winners to us. We, as Mr. Rivera has, has said, and many of our board members, you guys make our district, from our teaching staff to our, our administrative staff to everybody. We can't, we can't do this without you guys, so you are so much appreciated, and please, thank you. Mr. Pierce, Ms. Tomlin, Mr. Lapsley, congratulations. I know all of you have applied and applied and applied, and thank you for your perseverance because obviously, this is where God put you, and this is where God wants you. So, where you're at in the position, I believe this is where you should be, or he feels you should be, and I believe you guys are gonna do great work. I'm sorry, Mr. Greco, but she's gonna do, I'm sorry. You will, you will. Dr. Frye, congratulations on your doctorate. Dr. Frye and Dr. Rossi, congratulations on your retirement. You will be missed. With that being said, the board, please, we are gonna reconvene into executive session. With that, everyone, please have a good night, and God bless you.
Motion to?
Do I have a motion?
Motion.